I call the book session of the Portsmouth City Council scheduled for today, June the 27th, 2017, to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
This is Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Sumis?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my great pleasure to introduce the first item on our agenda, and that is the Virginia Port Authority's annual update. And given that is John Reinhardt, who's the Chief Executive Officer and Executive Director of the Virginia Port Authority, and I'm claiming right now, he's the guy that's responsible for the great forward movement of the port. Year after year, month after month comparisons, we had nothing but great growth in the port. And thank you for your leadership, and thank you for being here today to tell us about this great port.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, guests that are here. It's a pleasure to be with you. I'm backfilling for Sarah because she usually does this pitch and does a wonderful job, so I'm the backup singer today. And I'd like to thank you for the slides.
You're welcome.
I would like to go through a little bit about what's going on in your port, because you have two major facilities here in Portsmouth, and we've got a lot of activity going on at both facilities. But I'll give you also an overview of some of the things going on in the Port of Virginia at large. So I just want to spend a little time, obviously, I'd be happy to take questions at any time. So we are building momentum. If you think about what's happening, some of this is what's going on in the port. More than a billion has been invested across the Commonwealth this year by companies trying to relocate in Virginia. $670 million, really, it's $712 million of capital is being invested across the port. Just yesterday, we opened the new north gates at NIT, so $42 million investment, more than doubling the gate capacity, and we will ultimately have direct freeway access onto the 564 intermodal connector. You were here, you were there, you were there when the world's largest ship, the call the East Coast, arrived in May. We're having one every week, that size or larger. Just this morning, the vessel that was 13,400 TEUs called a Virginia National Gateway yesterday and left to berth this morning. So it's a weekly event. It's happening, and it's part of that whole shift to the larger ships that we've been talking about. More than 4,000 jobs, because really, at the end of the day, we as the port, we know we have a duty and an obligation to create jobs in Virginia and in the communities that we operate. So we're trying to stimulate economic growth. That was the ship that came, and number one, on East Coast rail volume, and I'll share a little more with that. The RMG purchase, which 26 of those are going into Virginia International Gateway, we signed that contract on November the 17th. There was a total of 56 RMGs rail-mounted gantry cranes, so $217 million purchase. That sent a message all across the world that Virginia was in the port operations for the long haul. It's the largest single crane purchase ever in the history of the industry. So it did catch a lot of headlines. It woke a lot of people up to what we are trying to do here in Virginia. So we're trying to grow opportunities, and this map will just start to pop some dots on where new businesses have situated themselves this year, as well as some of the expansions that are going on. So we're seeing good activity. We did have a speculative site here in Portsmouth that was done by the Interchange Group that is going to open this fall. So that was a good investment in Portsmouth, because they didn't even have a customer when they made that capital investment. Part of that was driven by the relationship the port had with that operator up in front, Royal, saying, "You need to come down and get closer to the deepwater ports." These are the 10 top customers that are Portsmouth residents that use the port. So we're just trying to show you some of the companies, over $17 million worth of cargo just out of these companies moved across the port this year. We also have some Mazmo Zanetti, which is doing the coffee, and I'll talk about that in a minute as well. So 85,500 tons of cargo flowing to and from Portsmouth through this port. The aid to local port, we've done a lot of recognition. We opened a fishing pier here in Portsmouth last year with some of the money from the aid to local ports. And then this year, we had two awards for Portsmouth that were done. We had $110,000 for the construction of Portside, and we also had $25,000 for the River Academy at Paradise Creek Nature Park. So we're trying to help the communities with those investments. We also are working with the schools, because we want to help develop workforce and also develop an understanding of the business, because we're continuing to create jobs, and we want to make sure we have the skillsets in our students to help take those jobs when the time comes. So you're saying we're working with communities and schools, Starbase Victory, Norcom High School, they come and look at port operations. We teach them what we do. They have a shadow day where they go around and see what our operators are doing. So we're trying to show them that there are career opportunities in the maritime industry. These are three events that we have done in the last few years that are really trying to focus the economic investment right here in Hampton Roads. The first is the international coffee exchange. That is why you saw some growth with Mazmo Zanetti. That's why some of the coffee roasters have been growing out in Suffolk. It's a 25-mile radius from the port, and it really does create an opportunity for those companies that want to hold the coffee here, and they don't pay any tax on it or any duty on it until it moves to market. So it really helps them become more competitive. The other is we expanded our foreign trade zone. This foreign trade zone helps speed up the time it takes to get a qualified site within the Commonwealth. And we did reach across the border into North Carolina in the last year. It's the first time you went cross-state on foreign trade zones. So it's something the port did in the past year. A little bit about our performance. This slide is one month old, so I'm going to let you look at this slide, but I'm going to give you some different numbers, because we're a very fluid environment. We have done 2.53 million TEUs through the end of May across the Port of Virginia. Our rail product was up 11.7%. We do 37% of every move that comes in and out of this port is done by rail, so that means it doesn't even go on the local streets. This past year, we improved the rail coming into Portsmouth Marine Terminal, so we now do double stack with CSX right on-site. We don't even have to go around to their facility. The barge has grown to 12.5% year-over-year growth, and it represents about 4% of our business now. And then the Richmond Marine Terminal Barge Service is up almost 40%. And that's calling it the Portsmouth Terminals, it's calling it Norfolk International Terminals. But these are things that we're doing to try to create those inland facilities that will help hold the freight across our terminals, and also use every conveyance, rail, water, and road. This is a big event that happened Christmas week last year. Excuse me. The bottom slide is the Virginia Avenue Tunnel in Washington, DC. It finally could take a double-stack train. Up until Christmas, CSX could only do single-stack. That is why in the median, you would see the long, long runs, because they were only doing single-stack. Now they're double-stacked. They can get it in on a much shorter track. To remain competitive, what we have to do as a port is to keep the cargo moving swiftly. That's the biggest thing we can do, and we've done that very well over the last three years. We also are doing it safer, and we're doing it faster. The press that we got on this Costco development was over almost a million dollars of press all across the world about Portsmouth and what is happening in the port, in Portsmouth. It's good stuff. We're trying to go deeper, wider, and safer. This is critical. We're at 50 feet today. We need to get to 55. We're working with the Army Corps of Engineers in the southern branch. We're pretty much done. We know we'll take it to about 44 feet. That will help with some of the economic development coming back and through here on the southern branch. The main channel is here across Craney Island. That will be 55 feet. We're looking to double the width out here, about a five-mile run, because the ships are so wide, they can't pass one another, so we need to have a wider channel. We're working very hard with the Army Corps to get this done. We're working with our federal representatives to get the federal money that needs to come, and we're working with the state to get the shares that we need. By 2018, this should be reviewed and ready to go. This is a rendering of Virginia International Gateway when it's complete. I'll show you some pictures of where it sits today. $320 million is being invested. Capacity goes up to $1,200,000. This is the berth expansion that you went to see, Mr. Mayor, where we were driving the piles. It's 800 feet. It'll give us 4,000 lineal feet of berth. When we can do that, we can have three of those largest ships on berth at one time. We'll go from eight to 12 ship-to-short crane, so we'll have another 50% increase here, 13 new stacks here, and a brand-new rail configuration that will more than double the rail capacity at that facility. It's going well. Now, as you know, there'll be equipment coming on stream. We have already moved up the first stacks, which are here, here, and here. Those should be coming online next spring. We had to accelerate that so we could get the cantilever rail-mounted gantry work done over here at the rail stack. So we're moving on target. We do expect this project to be done in 2019. This just is a layout of how it's being done. You'll see the rail up at the top, here, stackyard expansion here, berth expansion here, and some additional gates right here. We will have this done by 2019, a 50% increase of freight across that facility. This is a project as it looks today. Mayor was there just last week. You can see activity in all three phases. This is a local company that's doing some of the rail configuration, and then you have the berth where the piles are being driven, as well as the stackyard here. It's a lot of civil work. It's a great deal of civil work. H&amp;B Rail is a Portsmouth company that is doing this activity. So we tried to get some of that local content in our bidding. It's a closer look. It's moving very well. This is just a temporary cross street, because when this is done, that'll all be rail track. But that's just to allow us to get the work done during the civil portion. Across the water at the same time, we opened the new gates on Monday or christened them. This civil work is going to start this summer. We ordered the rail-mounted gantry cranes because of the long lead time, but there'll be 30 stacks. So when you think about it, it's going to have the same kind of capacity right there on the south end of NIT that we have at Virginia International Gateway now. The operating model is exactly what we do at Virginia International Gateway. The terminal operating systems will all be harmonized, so we can be better with mining big data and moving information. This will be done by 2030, and this was the $350 million that the Commonwealth invested in the port. Historic investment, because we've never had that kind of money by the Commonwealth put into the port. But they saw the economic opportunity that this could drive for the Commonwealth. So we're pretty excited about this. This just shows you how we're going to phase the construction. So three years, a million containers, 40% increase in capacity, all while operating and growing year-on-year throughout that process. So it is a challenging time to continue to move as much freight while you're doing the civil works like this, but we feel confident that we'll have this done. And if you annualize, let's say we filled that million containers, that could create more than 280,000 jobs across Commonwealth. When you just take the number of jobs per container throughput, it could have $38 billion of additional spending across Virginia, and it would create another $1.1 billion in state and local taxes. That's a full utilization of that capacity. So we'll have to build it out and fill it, but if it's filled out, that's what it would generate. Portsmouth. When I first arrived three and a half years ago, Portsmouth was closed. PMT was not even operating. There was nothing going on there. We were getting ready to give it away. It was almost there. We reset the clock, and we started to open it. We first put $7 million in it in 2014, so we could bring it back to life. We did some automotive work there. We started a little bit of container work there. And now it's doing about 80,000 moves. Before it closed, it was almost 400,000 moves going through Portsmouth Marine Terminal before everything was closed, when the Commonwealth took over BIG. We're going to do 200,000 moves there this year. That's our focus. So the first $7 million was spent. Now we've continued to make some investments. And we say $6 million, that's what's going on this year, right now. We're doing berth repairs. We did a similar million-two on berth repairs last year. We're doing new paving throughout the facility. We also brought in three more, two additional RMGs, so those to give us cargo handling equipment, RTGs rather, excuse me. We did add one more ship-to-short crane that was mothballed, that we brought back into service. And we also spent $1,750,000 this year for dredging to keep the alongside water depth at 43 feet. So we can handle a lot of ships there with the cranes, the capacity, and the terminal that we have. One of them, Captain Watkins remembers, the first ship ever to call Portsmouth Marine Terminal was an ACL ship. We have a long-term contract with ACL, and we brought him back to Portsmouth. So that's a good thing, because they might even use the rail for a lot of rolling stock, heavy equipment. So it's something we're trying to draw attention to. I believe that the port team has done a fairly good job. We're going to finish this year on Friday, about 2.85 million containers, or TEUs. We're going to be profitable for the third year in a row. Not a lot, just a little bit, because any money we make, we're reinvesting back in our facilities so we can continue to drive the economy. It's not something like a private company that would just take the profits and go, it all gets plowed right back into Virginia. So we have a good, clear path, and this is the message. We are Virginia's global gateway. We are here to bring business to Virginia and through Virginia, and to connect Virginia with the world. That's kind of the brief update. So I take any questions from the council or the mayor.
Thank you, sir. And again, thank you for your leadership. And we'll open up for questions, yes, sir. Dr. Whitaker?
Thank you for the information. You mentioned it was a figure, $1.1 billion in state and local taxes, that once it is fully built out, that's what you expect?
Built out and filled, so we'd have to use that million container capacity. So building it won't generate all that. It'll generate some of the property tax, but the rest of the jobs and the rest of the taxes will come if you fill that million containers.
Okay. What time period is that expected?
My goal is to fill it as fast as humanly possible, but we look out, and our projections are within five years that we'll have it filled.
And so also in that projection, have you broken out how much of that percentage-wise represents what goes to the state and what Portsmouth would be getting?
I don't have that answer right off the top of my head, sir. I mean, part of it is you look at the capital. We know now with 320, what is long-lived assets, and then we looked at from a property tax base, you'll see some of that. A lot of it goes into wage taxes, you know, because the jobs are created, that goes more to the state.
John, the increased usage of PMT, is that all still for container traffic or other types of cargo?
Well, the ACL is what's called a ROCON, so a lot of that is roll-on, roll-off. You remember, we did the windmill blades this past year, because we were trying to prove a capacity. We handled the windmill blades for renewable energy, and all those, 303 of them went down to Elizabeth, North Carolina. So we're trying to highlight the facility as a multipurpose facility, container, row-row, break bulk, and maybe even automotive, if we can get some interest out of the automotive industry. It's long-term purpose. It's going to have to be a multipurpose facility. When you build the technology into Virginia International Gateway and Norfolk International, those are pure container facilities.
Could you give us a status report on the eastward expansion of Craney Island? How's that project?
Sure. Long-term, all this modernization may allow us to defer that ultimate buildup. We're still pushing for the third crossing and the connecting road study, so you know that's underway, but that will be out a little bit. We're working on the eastward dike extensions, because we want to have it ready for the dredging when we go to dredge. My view is it's probably 2034 is the time when we're going to be filling it in and really trying to get it compacted, and it would be beyond that before you'd need to build it out. Really depends on the overall global economic development and how we're attracting business to Virginia. It by itself is a three-million container facility. It would have 28 ship-to-short cranes. It would have on-dock rail.
28 cranes?
28. Largest single terminal on the East Coast of the United States.
That's a two-mile edge there on that side. Is the concept to use the whole two miles?
It's designed so it could be built in cells, because what you don't want to do is make a $5 billion capital investment and have it sit used at 20%. So you would look at the economic model and say, you fill the whole thing, you compress and get the whole base set, but then you start to build it in one-third modules, and that would be the smart way, so you could phase out the development. So it's really the long-term, the 20, we have it in our 2050 to 2065 kind of plans, but you have to look at global economic growth as well.
With the investment of $320 million here at Virginia International Gateway, and let me go back to when Maersk opened it, it was the state-of-the-art worldwide, where would it rank in technology, forward-leaning?
Okay, it's a real good question. We're modernizing the terminal operating software and using a little more artificial intelligence as we go forward with the construction that we're doing now. We're also planning in reservation systems, which are not in place now. The mousetrap itself, it's state-of-the-art in the container stacks. But we made a long-term decision that we were going to continue to work with our workforce and only do semi-automation. So there are some terminals that are trying to go totally autonomous, which means all computer-driven vehicles and no workers. That's not the business model here. We want to maximize the technology in the middle. That facility is still considered a model for most ports around the world. When we build it out, they refer to it as the Virginia model. And it really was the most technologically advanced facility in all of the Americas, more than a lot in Asia, because the cost of labor was much less over there. Right now on the West Coast, there's one fully automated terminal they're trying to open. Still has some challenges.
Bill?
How's the volume, John, compared to Pier 440? We toured that, some of us, I guess, prior to the.
Pier 400?
Yeah, 400.
400. LA Long Beach is still the largest complex on all of the American shores, so they're number one when you took those two cities together. Pier 400, we're eclipsing what they do with our facilities, not just at BIG, but within the port itself. We're much larger.
Okay.
Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You mentioned about widening and deepening the channel?
Yes, sir.
How much in federal and state subsidized?
It's to be a 50-50 split. It's estimated to be about $316 million to do all that dredging to go deeper, wider. That includes the southern branch, as well as all the way through the inner harbor and going all the way out to the Chesapeake Bay, to the shipping channels. That by cubic yard is the cheapest, most cost-effective dredging anywhere on the East Coast. Savannah, Georgia is spending almost $800 million to do their dredging, and they're only going to go to 47 feet.
How much of that material will be at Craney Island versus the ocean?
The good majority of it, the clean fill, the stuff from the southern branch would not be, it might go to the current Craney Island cells, but it wouldn't be the compactable material we'd want in the new Craney Island for the terminal. Some of the clean sand, they will do some feature punishment with it, but the majority of it would come into the Craney Island expansion.
Follow-up.
Yes, sir.
The $316 million.
50-50.
Right. So of that 50-50, what percentage of that you expect to come from state versus federal?
50% from the state, and we're working with the state legislature right now to plan it into the future budgets, and the other 50%, so $156 million, $58 million.
So the total?
The total is.
Total subsidized?
Yeah. The total project will be paid by state and federal funds, divided 50-50 into the $316 estimate.
Thank you again, sir.
Thank you all.
And thank you for your leadership, and thank you for making the port healthy.
We're trying to drive the economy and help everybody. And you do have port in your name, so Portsmouth, we've got two big ports, and we're trying to bring them along. So thank you all.
Thank you. This brings us to, and again, thank you. This brings us to item number two. Dr. Patton?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. The city's economic development and planning departments, in conjunction with the Hudson Strategic Partners of Chicago, Illinois, collaborated on the development of a market study for the downtown and downtown D2 areas. The study focused on local, regional, as well as national market trends. The information ascertained through the study will be used in the zoning ordinance rewrite process, especially in the downtown D2 district, and will also be used to enhance the city's development and redevelopment activities and efforts in the downtown area. Mr. Bob Baldwin, Planning Director, will provide a summary of the report's findings and recommendations. Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Dr. Patton, and good evening, Mayor Rowe, and Vice Mayor Chair, and members of city council. I'm going to give you a brief overview of our 250-plus-page market analysis that was completed by Hudson Strategic Partners. Just for a little bit of background, the planning department and economic development department started discussing this project back in 2015. Some of the reasons we're looking at that is trying to get some data that was post-recession. You know, some of the other market analysis work that had been done was done 2008, 2009, and we were a little suspect of the value of it, considering the state of the economy at the time. So we want to get some more updated information. And the other thing, which I think is pretty near and dear to city council, we were on the planning department's side, having some concerns about how the zoning was set up in our downtown, our D1, our D2, our form-based code, with those prescriptive-type zonings depending on being market-ready, in other words. So if you had a design that required office on the first floor, retail on the first floor, and you had no market for office or retail, how would that impact your zoning? So we were trying to get a better handle for what the market was like. So before city council decided to redo the entire zoning code and redo the D2 district, we were looking at how can we modify what we had to try to be more compliant with the market. So this was originally the project that we were looking at it. Again, we're working with Hudson Strategic Partners out of Chicago, and we wanted to, again, look and update our market conditions. We wanted to get a local, state, regional, national kind of perspective, where are we in terms of how everyone else is doing. We wanted to look at different market segments, the office market, retail. We'd had a number of cases, I'll just tell you again, on the planning side, where developers were telling us there was no office market, and we're trying to make them put office space in from our zoning, or they were going to get financing, go into the lending institutions, and they were saying, "We're not funding a mixed-use project. We don't think you have enough demand for the retail component." And so we were getting some of those. Again, those are sort of anecdotal, so we want to get some more detail behind that. Again, from a lot of the economic development side, looking at the highest and best uses, looking vacant property, and that was an issue that was identified even back in the 2009 timeframe, 2008, when the city was redoing the zoning, the volume of vacant retail that was already existing. And back in that period of time, really, a call for more residential kind of backing up on new retail, because you already had a fair amount of vacant retail space, and you don't want to be competing new retail against your old retail. So some of the prior market work that had been done. And again, we really want to take a good look from a market perspective. How does that play with the way our zoning was set up? We're very concerned, and that continued, obviously, through 2016, as we're having more and more impacts of our zoning blocking people. And as I always like to tell people, zoning doesn't make a market, but it can block one. It can certainly impact it. So you need to have your zoning sync up with what your market is, otherwise, you don't have a fit. No fit, no development. So I think we're all sort of familiar with us being going on downtown. So that's kind of where we were set up. So Hudson came in and had a very broad approach, the way we're doing the thing. We had them come in, they met with a number of real estate developers, they met with stakeholders along High Street. We gave them a walking tour. They met with retailers. They looked at our employers. We had people from the Coast Guard, all sorts of people coming, and kind of giving them a feel for what our downtown was like, what the city's like, what the market had been. And I'll tell you, there was a number of conversations in those days about impacts of tolls and questions about impacts of tolls. And again, wanted them to get a good, broad view of how things were, look at some of the prior studies that have been done, look at our existing development opportunities, development patterns, where things were working, not working. And that was really kind of the project started. From the economic development standpoint, you know, they're really trying to have a little bit more of little bit more of a directional outcome for them, what should the economic development department and the EDA, for example, be focusing on, so they want to understand market trends. I just mentioned, for example, as we were starting to build residential projects, people were already asking us, is that too much? Have we already overbuilt our residential market? What's the target? How much is enough? How much is not enough? What does having residential do in other sectors like retail? So we were, again, trying to get a good feel for that mix. And again, trying to reinforce what we already have in our downtown, that mixed-use active, trying to build upon what we already have, like expanding our retail and residential opportunities, entertainment, lodging venues, trying to attract new residents, new businesses, increasing our tourism, and really creating a mixed-use destination. I think those are all the things we talk about all the time, what we really believe our downtown should be, is, could be better, improving our aesthetics, and really creating a gateway. And that was one of those issues we started talking about, the High Street London corridors coming in. So how do we create an attractive gateway? And also, bearing in mind that we had the MLK under construction at the time we started all this, what was that going to look like? How are the traffic patterns going to change with the new roadway? And was there going to be any opportunities created by changing transportation patterns? And just sort of summarizing the findings, and it's really nothing surprising here, I just want to summarize what's in here. They did note we have a large governmental presence downtown. They noted some concerns, or at least raised by retailers and restaurants, that when the corpse complex moved, there was a sense that that had caused some downturn in the local businesses by moving, moving employees further away. Definitely noted, we've got a real jewel with the access to the water and the view of the water. Strong residential market, they saw no real problem, looking at the trends out there, that we should still be focused on residential. The driver for our revitalizing the downtown is residential. Residential will bring with it more retail demand, more other demand. They noted, and this is a, one of those trends we were looking at, the more global-scale office space, we just don't have an office demand, it's very, very light. We'll just mention one other thing, I think everybody noted that the world's economies kind of changed before the recession, time to after the recession, how retail worked in those days, how office worked. People were now working more with their smartphones and iPads and all that kind of electronics so that the sort of traditional office demand isn't quite what it might have been, you know, 10, 15 years ago. And we've never really had a strong office demand in the last 15 or 20 years, and this really sort of bore out that that's not a target area. Hope to get some, but if you focus a lot of your time and effort on office, you're going to be spinning your wheels, basically, trying to chase that. And we can see from over in the Norfolk side, for example, how much of their office space they're converting to residential. And we're getting the same pushover here, as there are more demand for residential, trying to convert vacant office space into residential. They did make, well, I know you have a lot of federal employees, but because of their work schedules, they don't tend to get out as much as you'd like. You know, they're not as impactful in the economy as you, as you wish they could be because they tend to not have a long enough break in their lunchtime. And so they just were noting, and a lot of that was from conversations with the Coast Guard and some of the other military folks that they discuss things with. And they did note, again, on the toll side, whether we had any anecdotal evidence, whether we had any, you know, more substantive evidence, there's certainly a perception of an impact. During the time they were in town talking to the businesses downtown, people were at least noting, and of course, then as now, still suffering through the closings of these tunnels, which continues to have an impact, still not being really accounted for, a lot of these where we had the Midtown Tunnel close entire weekends. And these are just impactive on businesses. I just always mention, my sister refuses to come over to Portsmouth because she never knows when she can get back. At least she'll tell me, I don't know what your tunnel schedule is, I'm just, I'm just staying on the other side of the water. And I think that kind of mentality, we see that in a more global scale, by just that little personal example from my sister, anyway. So going forward, you know, what's the future vision? Again, this is sort of what we're trying to get to, really a, the economic development concept of what we'd like to have downtown, which is a resilient downtown. And by resilient, we mean if you lose one sector of the economy, it doesn't wipe you out, that you have a broad enough economy downtown that, that you, that if there's a change in one, one sector of the economy, your other sides are strong enough to, to keep moving forward. Clearly, growing residential sector, that is what sort of the message is flowing through most of their work. We still have a demand for residential. I think there's a lot of pent-up demand in Portsmouth from not having a lot of apartment-type construction. And again, I'll just mention, we're still looking at the impact of changing in banking and mortgages, and how that all affects millennials with high debt rates and all of those sort of factors. So the apartments are still a driving force, and they do believe we've got an opportunity to have a much more robust employment activity downtown. So they're really sort of bullish on that idea. But they just mentioned, it's going to take time, you have to be patient, but with a series of strategies and recommendations, stay on the, on the framework to success, really. And summarizing, they kind of put this down into what they call their seven recommended strategies, as are probably pretty familiar, a lot of what we've done before, but the number one, again, increase residential supply. Don't sacrifice the local experience for tourism. In other words, you have something special, don't mess that up by, by jumping for, for example, a lot of, I'll just use like, you know, chain-type activities, restaurants, you know, sort of stick to what makes your downtown special. There are areas, they look at for prioritization, I think we're kind of familiar with a lot of those, the former Holiday Insight, places like that, you have some areas you should prioritize. One of the reasons being, we go down to number five there, you need to have a critical mass, we shouldn't get too spread out. You know, we're still are growing downtown in terms of redevelopment, so you need to have a mass of things, you don't want to, you know, a little bit here and a little bit there has much less impact than having a more critical mass in a, in a smaller area. And again, updating the zoning and development ordinances, and I think you're all very well aware of that situation. I will mention tonight, we do now have a zoning consultant under contract, Berkeley Group, we just got them under contract, so we are now moving forward with the rewrite. And then the last thing, again, the promoting of the economic resiliency, and being able to have more than one successful sector of the economy working downtown instead of being totally, totally focused on one thing. So that was pretty much the recommendations there. It's a short summary, we're going to have the report posted on the planning department's webpage, anybody who wants to come and, you know, wants to download, take a look at it, it's a pretty lengthy report, a lot of graphics, interesting reading for people who are interested, who like that kind of thing, but it's, it was a little bit long to make a bunch of hard copies, but certainly if you want hard copies, we can get hard copies made for you. With that, be glad to answer any questions you have about the project. Again, we primarily did this as a resource document for economic development planning to use for a lot of the work programs that we're engaged in.
Questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Baldwin, back to the page seven, the recommended strategies. Number four, improve economic development incentive programs. How does that relate with what Dr. Cook, what the Hampton Roads study that is done? I know they were very critical about localities giving these incentives to businesses, that they didn't feel that that was really an economic driver.
Yeah, I think the way they would describe it in here is you should look at what's going on around you, and you should at least look to see if you're on a level playing field. In other words, not to go crazy and have, you know, super-large incentive programs where you don't ever get your money back. I think there's a concern about that kind of thing, but I think what they were saying is, they're using Hampton, for example, more as an example than, say, a Virginia Beach or Norfolk, where they're saying, you ought to look at what the competition is around you, and if you're losing out, you ought to at least try to get your incentives to a competitive level. And that's really what the story, the study is describing, is competitive-level incentives, not really over the top or excessive, what I would consider excessive incentives.
So in their study, that they figured that there was some significant difference in Portsmouth incentives and?
They know, yes, they did note that from their, from their report, there are some differences. This firm has also been working in Hampton, so they were familiar with what the Hampton was, pretty, pretty, you know, pretty well, you know, familiar with what they were doing. And so they were just noting that almost all localities have some sort of an incentive program, they're all different, how they're all structured. They were just noting comparatively, we didn't have as many incentives, or as, again, they said, you're just a little below the, what might be a level playing field. And again, this wasn't about trying to do something excessive, they just said, you're, if you're competing one-on-one with somebody, they're getting a little bit more from somebody else, you may be losing out, something that would be inappropriate.
So how, so how are we going to act on that as far as the?
Right, I think what we would talk about doing is, at some point, following up, taking a look at what incentive programs the city does have, taking an in-depth look at the incentive programs and seeing if there's opportunities out there to craft appropriate incentive programs, and how you would do that to work in the city's interest. Again, and I don't know the answer specifically what that would be until you go back and take a good, hard look at what you're having, what's working, what's not working. And really, if you look at other localities, what's working for them? And again, you know, not all these incentive programs work, sometimes people just want, you know, they just want you to, they're coming anyway. I think you have to sort of differentiate between the companies that are coming anyway and the ones that are like, a little bit more on that decision-making precipice.
I was just concerned, because before we start giving things away in forms of incentives, how do we know that that was actually the driving force that caused those businesses to locate in those?
Right, I'm never sure, I can't say you'd ever be 100% sure, but I think you get a pretty good feel for what your comfort level would be in terms of an incentive. And, and once you sort of hit that point, either they come or they don't come. I mean, that's sort of my take on it, that I don't ever think you want to overreach in terms of incentives, I don't think there's a payback for that. But I do think you can look at it and see what's the payback in terms of tax revenue, jobs, salaries, all of those things we're trying to build. And if you're getting enough payback in a broader scale, then that gives you an idea that, that it's a worthwhile endeavor to, to have an incentive. If you can't quite get to that point, can't convince yourself that that's a good investment, then I think that's when you have to back up and say, this maybe isn't the right, the right way to go. And I think the first thing to do is do an assessment, like what's everybody else doing, really? And how are they funding it? Because that's the other thing you have to look at, if you're going to have an incentive program, you've got to figure out, how do you fund the incentives and what are they? Are they tax, are they taxes, are they cash incentives, are they? There's all sorts of things going on around us, we see in the, in the surrounding communities, the kind of things they're doing. I'm not saying any or all of those things are what you want to be doing, but I think the idea is to get a broad view of what your incentives might be, and then come back with something that would fit in the, in the market you're trying to really attract. And that's, that'd be my recommendation on that.
Bill?
I think it would be a good idea, maybe at a future meeting, to revisit the current formula that we have for incentives, and also what the payouts have been in type to return on investment. I don't know that the current members of council have seen that, that program. I know it's been some time since I have, so I, I think we need to take a look at it, see if we're getting the bang for the buck.
In this recessionary period, we may not have done anything.
Well, we probably didn't, but I think it'd be good to review what the payouts have been.
I know there was a presentation one time dealing with the empowerment zone and some of the incentives there, and I believe economic development came with some recommendations, but I think that data is important to see, like I said, what the return is.
Yeah, we have a proprietary incentive formula beyond the empowerment program, so it'd be good to take a look at that.
I pick it up on these two comments, is there one agreement that we pick on Monday night, sometime during the summer, and we have a full briefing on our economic development incentive program as compared to other localities within the region, to include northeastern North Carolina?
Mm-hmm, they're competitors. I think you have to understand who you're competing against, how far you're willing to go, you know?
I think, too, the other piece, I agree with what Councilman Rudy said, it needs to be some data there showing us what our return is.
Exactly, yeah.
Just comparing them, is it going to give us that return?
We need to look at the historical. Let's focus on number one, is there, was there a loud voice for residential development?
Yes.
Particularly workforce?
All types of market rate housing, whether it be converting or new. And that was, I'll just answer your question, too, if you go back to the, there was a market analysis done around 2009, eight or nine, right before the zoning was done, and they did a regional residential assessment, and what the regional distribution ought to be, and then within that study, what Portsmouth's share should be. And it was surprisingly hot, and they were very bullish on our lack of residential development for what we should be supporting down here. And I will mention that part of the original concept in our D2 district under that study was, that ought to be a residential zone, a lot of it, at least closer to Effingham, to try to support businesses on the eastern side of Effingham. As you move down High Street, you'd have, try to get more residential, less commercial over there, driving back over to support your, what at the time was a fairly significant amount of vacant commercial states. They said, what you really need is more bodies downtown, 24 hours.
To lead the answer, but it seems to me that this might be a way of counteracting the population projection that was published this morning, and by the Walden Cooper, that we're going to have a 6.5% decrease.
A decrease by 2020.
Yeah. So they, they looked at it a different way.
I will mention, if I might, Dr. Patton's been talking about it.
Yes, we've been talking today.
You know, we, before we started the conference, the planning, you may recall, we worked with Walden Cooper to get a population projection done for us to start working on our plant, which was quite different. What they just published today, they were showing a slight increase, which we believe, based on our building permit data, new units being built downtown, was correct, you know, because if you look back through the period of 2000, 2010, we had a lot of demolitions throughout the city, whether it be Fairwood Homes, or where the Housing Authority was removing public housing, and they weren't being counted, you know, as far as the 2010 census. Since then, we've had a lot of redevelopment. And we're seeing, quite frankly, a sizable amount of infill, single-family dwellings being built. And that's something I don't know if people are noticing, we're noticing a lot of minor subdivision flats, a house here, a house there, two here, two there. So we were sort of surprised to see this trend. And so we've gone back to Walden Cooper and asked them to go back and look at the study they did for us, look at what they did to come up with the current projection, tell us what's happened that would make them, and I'm not sure, they've got a good answer yet for that, but we're going to get back to you and what the answer is because we had a detailed assessment done by them, and this is, we're a little bit caught by, you know, what, what happened there. I will mention, just for those who want to look at that data, interesting to look at, Hampton's losing population, Newport News is losing population, Norfolk was not. But if you look up in northern Virginia, they are like off the charts with development up there. It's some of those counties up there picking up 200,000 population over the next, you know, 15 years, whatever, that's amazing, the, what they're projecting for northern Virginia for how flat Hampton Roads looks in comparison. I mean, talking about Chesapeake is nothing compared to talking about Loudoun County or Loudoun County, or, and I'm not in favor of any of that, it's, it's an interesting dichotomy between regions. But we are going to get an answer back on what's happened with those projections and why they seem to think that our population's moving that direction, because our in-house data doesn't show that trend.
Good.
Yeah, we saw it pilot online immediately yesterday before it hit, started circling the wagon, and so we don't agree, and we are moving forward with asking for justification and showing why we don't agree with the data.
Good.
And we'll be coming back to you with the report.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This brings us to item number three, the city manager's agenda review.
Mayor and members of council tonight, the items that will be before you under the city manager's report are an adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant for the Virginia Tourism Corporation in the amount of $5,000. And this grant fund will be used as a marketing campaign to publicize an exhibition that will be coming to our museums, and the exhibition is entitled "Face the Unknown: Portsmouth and the Great War." You will have a ordinance accepting an alcohol education and prevention grant in the amount of $6,473.25. And this grant comes from the alcohol, Virginia Alcohol Beverage Control Board, and it will be used by the police department to fund an alcohol education program. And then there will be a resolution authorizing the convenance of 3215 Academy Avenue to the Economic Development Authority, and that execution will be a deed and corporation agreement and other documents in connection therein, and that is for the adult daycare center that is proposed to buy that property and set up there, and they are already in Churchland, but they need a larger space. I will yield to the city attorney for an item regarding Chapter 32.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight you will also have an ordinance that amends Chapter 32, which addresses the Uniform Regulation of Small Cell Facilities on Existing Structures. This is part of Senate Bill 1282, which was passed in January, and in effect curbs some of the prior locality's authority to address small cell infrastructure on existing poles. However, it must be emphasized, that's existing poles, and so we have passed that regulation. And so we have passed that regulation to be in accordance with state law, which becomes effective July 1. The council still will have the opportunity going forward to exercise its authority under franchise, as it relates to franchising utilities, going forward on new poles and new facilities. We will be bringing that information back to you in the future with regard to existing poles. We'll have a discussion with regard to overarching principles, and, and then subsequently, you will have actually individual franchise agreements with various utilities that may be seeking to, seek services inside the right-of-way here in the city of Portsmouth. So tonight, we are simply dealing with the pre-existing poles that may be utilized, and we'll be coming back to you as you've requested to address the issues, the broader principles with regard to franchise facilities and subsequent individual agreements.
Yes, sir.
So, so under the existing, for the existing poles, does that prevent the city from taxing or getting any revenue off of the use of the existing poles?
The existing poles have fee structure, statewide fee structure and maximums, and it addresses the fact that you can't have a moratorium, and what your considerations are for existing poles. So that structure is set from that standpoint.
And this is all related to the 5G?
5G and 4G technology, that's correct.
Is it safe to say that the state is nibbling slowly at our ability to control this development?
I, I will tell you that what the entities would say is that they are trying to find a way to make it streamlined and efficient from their standpoint. But essentially, these were things that were within the purview of franchise agreements overall prior to. And so, they have sort of broken it off into parts to try to address the administrative aspect of it. But yes, it is nibbling at the edges. And as I always say with the legislation, whether we're trying to bring legislation forward, or whether other entities are bringing legislation forward, one should expect at least two shots or two bites at the apple whenever we have this sort of process going forward. So I would suspect if there are some difficulties from the corporate perspective, we may have a different round this year of some more adjustments to this process. So they may continue to nibble a little bit at the edges.
You know, this, this impacts Portsmouth greater than it does other regions in the state because of our limited tax base, and also because of the economics of our cities. So I, I think that when we see these things like this happening, we have to really attack it aggressively. I don't know, I don't know where our delegation was on, on this, but I hope our citizens see that really a lot of this is being controlled by counties and cities that really outnumber us when it comes to voting in the General Assembly. But we get the impact of it because of our limited tax base. That, that whole issue that we just heard from the Port Authority, to me, it's sort of frustrating to sit in here and listen to how well the Port Authority is doing, because we don't benefit from it, I think proportionally. You just heard them mention, they're going to be getting $316 million in tax incentives, and half of it is coming from the state. And I'm just saying, we're, we're really missing out when it comes to the local support that we should be getting. And I don't know if our, our citizens really realize how, how we're being short-changed in, in all of this, and all of these grand pictures. I mean, it's great to see what they're doing, but at the same time, aren't we in litigation over the assessed values of their personal property? So we don't know yet really how much that return is going to truly be. So I'm just, it's, it's, I think our citizens just need to be aware of how much Portsmouth is really getting short-changed, and then when you hear information about these alternative facts that Dr. Pat just mentioned about the housing market, I think...
Alternative facts.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you said that the housing market is going differently than the...
Right. I mean, our assessment of how we see ourselves swirling, right, we're going to fight it.
You know, to that point, how about first cities? Have they taken a position? I would think, as they represent urban cities like ourselves, that they would be aggressively defending our interests on this thing.
And we definitely will, will, will reach out to them, and we are a part of, of the organization. So we'll definitely communicate with them what we're, what we have received.
But you know, I, I agree with Councilman Whitaker on the, the port. I sit here and see their sales figures going through the roof, and revenue expanding, and proportionally, we're, we're not enjoying the, the benefit of their success, especially when I see I-64 with the increased truck traffic deteriorating before my eyes. And, you know, that, and I get complaints about container trucks going down Mount Vernon and other streets at all hours of the night. So we, that's, that's another thing. Our delegation needs to be, be fighting for more revenue from that facility. I mean, it's, it's great that they're doing well, we aren't doing so well. So I think we have to keep it prospective.
Because I, you know, when you, you hear them give a figure of $316 million, and at first I thought, when he said 50/50, I thought he meant they were paying 50%, and 50 was coming from the government. But it's, it's all, it's all subsidized corporate welfare, is what it is. And it's, it's, it's coming from our citizens' tax dollars, and we're not getting the return. And so I, I think that that's something we really need to really press aggressively, that we get a fair shake.
Dr. Pat?
Yes. Report backs, I have two.
Okay.
You have before you two report backs from last night's meeting. One was a request, please provide information on the community development block grant notice published in the Currents on June 4. And Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority is planning to sell property purchased with CDBG funds that did not meet the national objective for which the funds were expended. And a requirement by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Regulations require the city must notify the public and allow citizens to comment when real property purchased through CDBG block grant funds that intent to sell does not meet the national objective. And the purpose of the July 4 advertisement is to provide the comment period for the listed properties, there are 11 properties that were in that particular ad, and the addresses are noted throughout the city, so that the citizens will actually be able to know where those properties are. And at the end of the comment period, the city will consider any public comments and decide whether or not to sell the property. To date, there have been no comments, and it has been advertised.
What's, what's the...
Dr. Whitaker.
What were the total amount of CBG funds that were used to purchase those properties?
These 11?
Right.
Okay. I do not know right off what it would cost for the 11. We could find out.
I mean, I'm, I doubt if you probably would get a lot of citizens' comments on this, because they probably don't even realize what this entails.
That's exactly right.
Can we get that figure?
We should be in control.
Before, is that something that, that you can get before our 7 o'clock meeting?
Well, not before 7 o'clock. We'll have to do some research to find out. Just to follow up on the way this works, once those properties are sold, they're sold at fair market value. That money goes back to HUD, and HUD returns it back to the city's CDBG line of credit. So we'll actually probably get more money back than we started with when the properties were purchased, because the value of the lots is today's dollar, today's market value, as opposed to the, you know, 1970s, or 80s, or 90s, whenever these parcels were originally purchased. These are some parcels that have been in the inventory for some period of time. But we'll take a look and see if we can find some of that information. Would probably be housed with PRHA, and we'll have to see what we can get from them. We'd be glad to, to take a look at that for you.
Yeah, that was my concern, because the total amount of CBG funds versus how much we're getting in return, because all of those properties haven't been sold, is that correct?
These properties?
Have all of them been sold?
These properties haven't been sold. They cannot be sold until we go through this process.
Well, I thought one of them, I thought one of them was the Wendy's property.
That's correct. And that property has not been sold yet. It's still in PRHA's hands.
Oh, okay.
And that's why they're going through this process for those, I think there's seven of those parcels that were originally CDBG acquired, in that London Boulevard court. There's a number of those in that court.
So we're pretty comfortable, because the CBG, CDBG funds came through the city, and then the city transferred them to PRHA.
Right. PRHA serves as a sub-recipient, city's responsible.
Right.
Money goes to PRHA.
So in the final analysis, it's the city that...
Makes the decision.
The hook for that.
Exactly.
Right. So we are comfortable that the amount that we receive in CBG funds is going to be covered by the fair market value of the sale of these properties?
We are.
Okay. And so, when, when, when does the city have to reimburse HUD? When does that happen?
Well, what will happen is, when the properties are sold, once, once PRHA proceeds to, to sell, when they get the proceeds from the sale, those proceeds immediately go to HUD.
Okay, so...
And then it circles back and goes back into our line of credit.
Okay, good. So we're not on the line?
No. City's not at any risk of paying back.
Okay.
In fact, this is a good way to get yourself off the hook.
Okay.
That's a way of putting that, too.
Okay.
And get money to do more CDBG projects, real projects.
Everybody good?
I have one more there, just a short one. Request update on the status of SIPSA. The Southeastern Public Service Authority, SIPSA, has hosted discussions with Willabretta, and will receive a proposal from Willabretta for the City of Portsmouth Municipal Waste Disposal by July 7, 2017.
So does that mean now the whole, the whole deal with repower?
I, I don't know anything about the deal with repower. I don't...
We're talking about our waste.
We're talking about our waste.
Well, well, the question I was asking was, because we got, we received an email from Attorney for Hill, updating us, and it seems like that, that agreement had not been fulfilled yet with Dominion, Virginia Power.
Right. They meet on tomorrow.
Okay.
The SIPSA meets tomorrow, and that will probably come up during that meeting.
Okay, so I guess at our next meeting then, we'll know what direction to go in? Will there be a vote at the meeting tomorrow on the Dominion power issue?
I don't know if it's a vote tomorrow. I don't know if it's a vote tomorrow, but I do know they meet tomorrow.
Okay. Because that, there has been no agreement yet on...
No.
And if there's no agreement on it, then where does that put Portsmouth?
We are not, our, our waste management and disposal site is not caught up in the repower. What we are doing, and what SIPSA, not us, what SIPSA is doing, because Willabretta is in Portsmouth, because we are the, our household disposal waste right now is going to Willabretta. SIPSA in that Portsmouth does not have a transfer station, and we're the only city in, that does not have the transfer station. Our transfer station and what is being proposed, and what Willabretta is developing, the proposal to get back to SIPSA, is for them to be our recipients of our municipal household waste, and we will remain there.
What you're saying is that we need to rise or fall with repower.
That's right.
If it's okay with council, can, can Attorney Cordell update us on this whole situation at our next council meeting?
Sure.
Because this is a major issue.
Yes. And she'll probably have more information with the meeting tomorrow, okay?
We'll put that on the 10th.
That's on, that's on the 10th.
Okay. Go ahead.
One, just the last thing. You have in front of you, members of council, the FY 2018 adopted budget. The online budget will be available to the public right after this meeting. It will go on.
This is the final, 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 final one.
That's it.
Yeah. Our next item deals with our next community meeting at our retreat. We decided to have a very informal meeting, and we directed the city clerk and the city manager to do that, and we had it at Bodawee. And so, the question before us is, how do we want to do our September retreat? Not retreat, but...
Community meeting.
Will you bring us up to date on what our options are?
Councilmembers, your next community meeting is scheduled for September 18. It's a Monday, and it's currently scheduled at Woodrow Wilson High School, using the format that we use at Woodrow Wilson High School, because we're in the Little Theater. My question to you is, you've had the Churchland Middle School format, where we had the tables. You've now had the Coffee Talk, where we were at Bodawee. This would be the, what I would call the regular format, where you would be sitting up front, and the audience can come to the mic. My question to you is, how do you see this community meeting? Which format do you want it? If you want it the Coffee Talk format, then I have to change locations. If you're okay with the way it's currently set, then we're good. But I want to make sure that your community meeting is the way that you want it. So I need your direction on which format you want this upcoming community meeting.
All right. Well, let's get a preference. We'll start with Elizabeth.
I thought the Coffee Talk format was wonderful, and just last night, three different people who were citizens who I don't know, came up to me and thanked me for that meeting, and how much they enjoyed it. And one was a man who was a commissioner, a museum commissioner, who had asked me a question at that meeting, and I had found out and called him back. But literally, just last night, three different people who were here commented on how much they enjoyed that.
Yep.
I agree. I was very delighted with the Coffee Talk format, but we, we had some suggestions following that. I think one of them was that a lot, a lot of people didn't realize they could get up from one table, go to another. So it needs to be, I think, more structure as far as maybe change tables every, I don't know, 15 minutes, whatever. I'm sure y'all figured that out. The, the other thing, might for each table, just put a list of suggested topics that maybe we can agree upon that among ourselves, just to kind of kickstart the conversation.
Okay.
But yeah, I like the Coffee Talk format.
Yes, sir.
I enjoy both formats, the one at Churchland and the Coffee Talk. But if, if it's going to be at Wilson, I would probably prefer a table, because we were able to, to record some notes, I think, when it was at Wilson. Before, you were just sitting in chairs, open up to, you know, the community. So either format would work for me, but if it's going to be at Wilson, I would prefer to have a table, like at Churchland.
And we, and just for your information, the reason for the change for putting the seats down front was to make council a little bit more personable to the audience, and that was as a result of citizens speaking previously about the community meeting format. Because we used to have the tables and council behind the tables, and on the stage, and that kind of thing, and it was thought to be too impersonal.
Okay. Hey?
I don't have a preference.
No preference.
I like the Coffee Talk format, because my opinion, the way we were, you know, it was more personal with the citizens that wanted to attend it. And there's more communication, because if it's only one person allowed to be at a microphone at a time, we don't get as much input from as many citizens. And I was going to make the suggestion, since it was at Wilson, Wilson High School, is it possible we do it in the cafeteria at Wilson High School, and just do it the Coffee Talk form? That way, it's still in that location, as we try to spread out amongst the city, and just do it in, in there. But I think that would be, I think they really enjoyed it, and it was a lot of good conversations that we had that day.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker? Coffee Talk, so let's go Coffee Talk.
Got you.
And at Wilson?
7:00 P.M.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you can do it at Wilson, just...
Yeah, we'll do the cafeteria. We'll work it out.
All right. Which brings us to City Council liaison reports, and we'll start again tomorrow.
My only report, obviously the court was giving it for me, and I'll say this out in the big meeting, from military affairs perspective, the Military Affairs Committee is hosting a July 4 concert on July 4 at 8:00 P.M. at the Old Holiday Insight. The Padwater Concert Band will be playing patriotic music beginning at 8:00 P.M., and then they'll be playing the 18th of Overture during the fireworks.
Thank you.
No, I don't have any here for report.
Sports Hall of Fame, I think since I had a telephone conversation with Eddie Webb, I think what he told me has been widely reported. But that is, they still plans to, to vacate the building on or some point in time by the end of June. The building's on the market for $3.95 million, and they're going to move the exhibits to kind of a hallway-type exhibits in various buildings at Virginia Beach Town Center. So what you read in the paper and saw on the news, pretty much what he discussed with me.
Thank you. Lisa?
I don't have any updates. Our partners with PRHA was here yesterday, so we got all of those updates, and I haven't had any other meetings.
Okay. Paige?
Yeah, I'm, you heard about the towers. You're going to see one coming from Planning Commission for, I'm sorry, Rapidan? For Rapidan, was it next month? We'll get, we'll get that though?
Yes, this will come to your July meeting.
Next month, so this is, this is very timely, and, and some of the things we need to get to consider, and Attorney will probably tell you about this later. But Planning Commission did not recommend approval for the one that you're going to see. And if we agree with that recommendation, we would have to put it in writing. So, so we'll have to have the, have some kind of prep work done by the city attorney's office prior to that meeting. We'll talk about, talk about it more, more later, but just want to prep everybody. We do have one coming next month for a tower in Rapidan in Cabot, Maryland.
Is this one of the higher towers?
Yes.
It's all private, bro?
Yes. It's right there across, it used to be the Cots Building, the back, the back of the Cots Building, right in, you know, those houses right there in front of it?
So we, we have to be specific on why we're objecting to it?
Yes. That's, that's the new law.
Right. All right.
That was it, Mayor.
Hey, first, the Park and Authority, that meeting has been postponed until July the 20th, so I will bring a report after that meeting. We did have the meeting with the Hatton Roads Regional Jail Board this past Wednesday. Had a lot of information from there. One thing they made note, brought it to us, was they had to do a budget transfer, which they were utilizing some salary savings from vacancies to cover some medical costs because they're having a lot of issues with higher cost medical, as trend is with everyone. At this point in time, we were advised that of the individuals incarcerated there, we have 14 that have cancer, six that are on dialysis, and they said they're spending approximately $100,000 every month for HIV patients as far as medical treatment. So basically, they use their salary savings to cover that at this time, but this is going to be an ongoing thing. One thing they alerted us to is there's a new treatment that's coming out. Their, their new, the doctor that's the new medical director there referenced the hepatitis C. It's a new treatment. It's a shorter treatment, but it's supposed to be a better treatment, but it can cost approximately $100,000 per patient for eight-month treatment. And at the current time, there's 112 people in that facility that have hepatitis C. So they're not sure how legislation are going to deal with this at this time, but, but that would be 11.2 million if there's 112 people there for that treatment. Good news they gave us was they had a job fair. They held one right there on their property. They had 175 people that attended. They're trying to fill 25 vacancies that they have now. They actually spoke with 90 of the individuals that were there, and they ran out of time, but they're still contacting to other people out of the 175. They, they told us they had to spend $16,700 for some mowers for the ground maintenance of the complex, and they're going to spend $15,000. They need to do man lift, and that's also for maintenance uses. And one thing that I wanted to bring is, is we have the budget, you know, the budget for 2018 for the regional jail. 2018, it's increase of $1, basically it's per bed space. The city, we have 250 beds in the regional jail. With that $1 increase in 2018, that's an additional, additional $91,250. So they're looking at a one, and this is projection, this is what we're having, but with these medical costs that could even be higher in the future. But they're looking in 2019, a $2 increase, 2020, another $1 increase, and 2021, another dollar increase. So in four years, we will be paying an additional $456,250 on top of what we're paying now for the same bed space. So that's, that's all the information I have. And one other good thing, there was a presentation, they had a presentation of a plaque in recognition of Government Finance Officers Association. It was a certificate of achievement for excellence in finance reporting, and our next meeting is scheduled for August the 16th.
Thank you. And vice mayor?
What's our, our bed utilization rate? Are we, we filling the beds we have over there?
The bed space is not full at this time. I've heard conflicting numbers. They told other day approximately 50. I heard today that it was 34 that were not being filled.
Is there a reason for that? Do you know?
I don't know the reason for that. That's between the Sheriff's Department and their. But it has come to light some information I wasn't aware about, about state code and per diem that the regional jail, if somebody's, people that are in the Portsmouth jail right now, we receive an $8 a day per diem from the state if they're state individuals. The way the code is, is my understanding that that per diem is supposed to come back to the jurisdiction. But right now, the regional jail, we're paying the daily cost for the inmates we have in there, but they're receiving the $8 a month from the state that should be coming back to this jurisdiction. So something at some point in time was changed, and I need to get some more information on that. But it's very possible that they're getting that additional funding from the state that should be coming back to our city as opposed to the regional jail itself. So I think that's something that we're going to have to look at and get more information to make a decision on.
So we're helping them in our jail, and, and, and they're getting paid for them, and we're paying it for the empty beds in, in the regional jail. Then we'll, did I hear that right? And then, 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 then we're, we're not getting the money for them to be in our jail? That's going to the regional jail, too?
No. The per diem, the $8 per diem, we are getting for the inmates in our jail, in the Portsmouth City Jail. The $8 a day for every inmate we have in the regional jail is going to the regional jail, which should be coming to us, the state code. At some point in time, there was a change. I don't know why that decision was made, but they're getting...
So they're keeping the $8 that we're supposed to get, plus we're paying them for them being there? So, so we're paying twice?
We're, we're paying, well, we're not paying twice. We're paying $59.45 per day, per bed, times 250 beds, and that's the number that we have. But right now, the number I have was 34 vacancies. So 34 beds, if, you know, $250, if you multiply the number of beds we have is, and you multiply it by the $8 that the state is giving to the regional jail instead of us, we're losing about $630,000 that should be coming to us, not the regional jail.
And how many cities are, are included in that?
The cities, the listed cities are currently Chesapeake, 250 beds. Hampton has 175. Newport News has 200. Norfolk, 250, and Portsmouth is listed at 250.
Can we sit start and draw a state code? Can we get a legal interpretation on that from our city attorney regarding the per diem issue so that we make sure we're legally correct?
I think we should.
Yes.
And might have a problem with it.
And the other issue, as, as far as the healthcare costs, any Medicare, Medicaid funding in there?
Yes.
I'm not aware of all those fundings, but...
So, so there could be further ramifications based on what happens at the federal level that could even be higher?
Big time. Would be cursed to talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the things that the jail called to our attention, and both Mr. Clark and I attended, is that all, all of the five cities send their sickest inmates to the jail, and the cost of healthcare is skyrocketing. And by law, our inmates must be cared for, no different than any other individual. And because of the grave illnesses, it's, it's going up in the millions of dollars, and it's the five cities that are, have to face the brunt of what these escalating costs are going to be. And we, as a city, as the councilman said, we're paying for beds, $59.97 a day, and there are vacant beds. And so that money is, we're spending it, but we don't have anybody in the bed. And so that is something that our liaison, and I'm working with him, is just how do we proceed?
Bring on this shirt and got a t-shirt.
All right.
Bring the shirt and got a t-shirt.
Dr. Wood? Any report?
No, just, I know it's been brought to council's attention about summer school and the mosquito issue that's going on.
Yes.
And I believe us.
Yes. I sent you all an additional report today, and Mayor, members of council, we're, we're doing everything within our possibilities for the mosquito infestation. We are working and meeting today and almost every day with our partners that are Crane Island and the Corps. We are, we are spraying with a contracted plane, but the F-130, which is a federal plane, is not coming to southeastern Virginia until sometime in August. And they have made it clear, if there's something national that takes precedent over coming to this area, as the last year it did not come, it will not be coming. So we're doing everything. Our mosquito control division employees are working overtime. They're, they've sprayed all, half of the city last night. The other half will be sprayed tonight. Anytime there's rain, we start from scratch again. The materials for spraying have to be prepared by this team, and humidity, rain, high temperatures, and no wind is a haven for just mosquitoes to stay where they are. And just think about it, we've had no wind, and we've talked to our, the meteor, reached out to the meteorologist in almost weeks now.
Bill?
Well, I know that we're, and all of us got your email, I know we're doing a lot. I'm not so certain that Crane Island and the Naval Depot are doing all that they can do because the mosquito situation, and every summer we got humidity, high temperatures, and wind. But I can tell you, in the Churchland area, just a couple miles from Crane Island, it's intolerable. Mosquitoes literally chase you to your car, chase you back in your house, and get in your house because you can't shut the door fast enough. And, I mean, it's the worst, and I've lived out there since '79. It's the worst I've seen it. And I'm convinced that it's coming from Crane Island, and they need to do something. What, what they're doing now is not working.
We did share in your report that there is a cell that has cracks in it. And when there's cracks in a cell, which our team has gone out with them, and we see the cracks, water gets into the cracks. What they proposed was to take additional dredge material to cover the cracks. However, where it is cracking, they have advised us that that material that is there has not settled enough for them to put additional dredge on, and these coming from the engineers. So our hope that they would cover it is not happening. What we ask them now to do is to trench where that cell is so water can run out, and that's where we are now in a discussion of can they bring in the manpower to trench where the water can run out of where the cracks are? And then that would evaporate, get the water out, and probably help with that infestation. But there are cracks in a cell out there.
Will they allow us, like they did a few years ago, to larbicide those fishers?
They are being, those cracks are being larbicide, but we, we believe they, that water needs to get out of them. Because when it rains, then there's additional water going in. So that's where we are. And Mayor, as I said to Mr. Moody, going all the way to our commander, who both you and I know we have not spoke with him.
And I was going to bring that up.
That's right. That is, that is at the level.
That's Colonel Jason Kelly.
Yes.
And many of you have met him.
Yes.
Army Colonel. And I, I think with council's consensus, we asked the city manager to call him on behalf.
Right.
Say, I'm calling you, I've been instructed by city council.
Right, and I've asked that...
Having that conversation...
I asked that because the team out there is pretty much have said to our team, we are handling this, you can go to command, but whatever. And then I said to Mr. Moody, the next step is we go to the coordinator. So I will reach out tomorrow to him, and even if I have to go and meet him, and we go out there.
Good.
So I will report him back on that.
Very good.
Immediate.
And take with you the, the message that you're, you're doing this on behalf of council.
Right, I would.
Pretty good. Okay. HR-TAC was pretty uneventful. We had prepared for a meeting that might have been with some fireworks works. There looked like there might be an attempt to consolidate HR-TAC and the Planning Commission, at least at the leadership level, and that did not take place. And so HR-TAC is still on track as far as their construction projects are concerned. With that, we need to go into closed session to discuss board submissions. And is there a motion? Sir? Ma'am?
We got two appointments, the ones we talked about last night.
I thought y'all talked about that before.
Y'all, y'all good with it?
Yeah.
And I did check on the, on the third one. We can do that one in December.
Okay.
Talked about last night.
All right. We don't need.
Okay.
So we'll adjourn the work session.
Settle that well.
Yeah. We'll adjourn the work session. Dinner's ready, and we'll reconvene at 7 for our reception.